All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our January 16th Board Work Session. Can I get an adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Motion passes. First up, we have item 2.01, MSBA 2024-C Board Policies and F-Series Revisions. Do we have someone that is presenting on these policies? Or are we just having discussion? Or is there any kind of formal? Sorry to put you on the spot. Would you like to just give us maybe a highlight of what's been discussed?
Yeah, I never want to assume you all want me up here capitalizing. Yes, MSBA, so I'm going to kind of, there's two parts here. Two parts with an asterisk, kind of a third. So we have, in our work session tonight, we have MSBA's release of 2024-C updates. So you'll see those in there, in that top box, in the policies. And what's nice, MSBA gives us a quick summary page at the top of the policy revision to show the rationale as to why, whether it's through Senate bill changes, law changes, Supreme Court cases, things like that. The second part is the F-Series reviews. And these come from the Board Policy Committee's work. The E and the F series were reviewed this year by the Board Policy Committee. And in the F series, we found some changes, recommendations for a changes to policy. I mentioned two with an asterisk or three, depending how you want to look at it. I also want to mention that in GCBDA and GDBDA, in the 24-C updates, there's also a district-initiated update regarding domestic partners being eligible for some benefits for our employees. So that's the quick overview. Happy to answer any questions specific to the work. And we have SLT leaders available if it's in their area of expertise.
Thank you. Okay, so out of curiosity, do the MSBA updates that come through, do those go through the Board Policy Committee for review as well? Or do they just focus on the F series and then these ones come directly to us?
Good question. So they go to SLT for review as well as the Board Policy Committee. And any changes, sometimes we'll work with legal. MSBA's legal or even our own legal with Joe Halli to make revisions or changes. So yes, we cover those through SLT. They're also reviewed by the Board Policy Committee. And sometimes the Board Policy Committee has some questions, things for SLT to look at or get answers for too. And they've been through that process.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions on these? Nope. Vice President Eslic.
Okay, I did have a question about the domestic partner piece. We talked about this when I was on the committee last year. So I know we initiated this conversation. And one of the concerns I recall that we kind of discussed was how to define it in the sense of how that happens when like the employee registers or fills out their information and, you know, they determine who they're listing as their domestic partner. So my curiosity is just how that process is, was that discussed? And what that process is going to look like for somebody maybe not new to the district who has a domestic partner? How do they go about making that official in the district's eyes?
So, and the best I would describe it, it's going to be different in each case through an interactive process and a discussion. And I think MSBA did a nice job of defining what a domestic partner is. So we'll then use that and engage in an interactive process with our employees. Say, hey, tell us why and how. How long have you lived together? How long have you shared a mutual obligation of support for necessities of life? What necessities of life would you identify that are mutual in that, like a married couple? So I feel like will, each situation will be different. We don't want to develop a checklist or a, hey, have to hit these marks because that's not the spirit of what we're trying to do here. But we will work with folks and say, hey, show us how you meet the definition here. When needed.
Thank you.
You bet.
Board Member Haley?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Carlson, back to what Board Member Eslic, the subject she brought up, is if the employee notifies us that they have a domestic partner, okay? We're going to, I'm assuming we're going to make a notation of that in their personnel file so that we know that if there's a death in their family or something like that, there's benefits available for that. Is there a mechanism in case there's a separation or a change of domestic partners or something like that that need to be incorporated into this policy?
I don't think so at this time because the way this is going to operationalize is it's going, it's for two things. Bereavement leave and use of PDO. So when those events happen, we will engage with the employee about the why and then get the pertinent information at that time. We do not plan on maintaining a bank of domestic partner status just like we don't maintain a bank for married status.
I understand. My question, and I'll give you a scenario that kind of came up. I know that we reviewed this policy in the Policy Committee, but I've thought about it. For instance, what if we have someone who has a domestic partner and their mother dies? Okay, we're going to provide a bereavement leave on behalf of that domestic partner's mother. If they change domestic partners and their mother dies again, another domestic partner dies or their mother dies or something like that, how would that be impacted by this policy? So would we be extending that benefit again? Or, you know, how would that work? What would that look like?
Good question. So potentially, yes. Again, it would be an interactive dialogue with the individual, similar if someone was married, divorced or widowed, and then remarried. They would then have that same benefit again. So I think it would function similarly to that. And in the moment those incidents occur, we would have that dialogue. Our HR professionals would have that dialogue with the individual to clarify why it's being used a second time for the mother of a domestic partner.
Okay, so would we expect our employees to notify us if there was a change in status? I mean, I guess maybe that's the right question to ask.
No. Because we would have the conversation when the benefit is used. We would not and do not currently maintain the status. You know, sometimes default, we know marital status because of health insurance.
Sure.
But generally, we do not track marital status of our employees.
Okay, so we wouldn't actually need to address it until the benefit was being provided?
Correct. And at that time, we'd have that dialogue.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Carlson.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions at this time? Seeing done. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, next up, we have item 2.02, Comprehensive Facilities Master Plan Update.
Good afternoon. Last month, December 19th, I stood before you right here at this spot and provided a very lengthy and extensive overview of our comprehensive facility master plan, long-range facility plan, both in the areas of facility needs, infrastructure needs, as well as talking about utilization and enrollment. And so, you know, I want to dig a little deeper into one, one part of that tonight and just here in the time that we have. And we can, we'll take as much time as we like on this. So in that presentation, I referenced a guiding document. A guiding document that we use as a school district. One of those was our board policy. One of those guiding documents was the work that was done in 2018, 2019. The work that was done at that time by the Comprehensive Facility Master Plan Team guides a lot of the work that we do in our design and in our design concepts, which often leads to the types of buildings that we see and the learning spaces we see. And so I want to take tonight a little bit of time just to dig a little deeper into those learning, those design standards and into those design concepts and why. And try to dig into the why. You walk into these buildings and, you know, you walk into East Trail's Middle School and you walk into Mason Elementary and you see these beautiful buildings. And they're really, really marvelous to look at. But also, they are designed in a way to provide the most optimal learning environment for our students and the optimal teaching environment for our staff. And not just our teachers, but our parents and everyone else that is engaged in that teaching and learning process. So in the document that, in the presentation tonight, you can see the objectives. We want to review the process that was followed in 1819, which created our current design standards and concepts. So we want to go through that process. I'm going to, I'm just going to walk you through it. And I'm going to lean on my friends here who were here in 18 and 19. We have maybe six or seven of the folks who were in the room at the time. As I was talking to Dr. Berger earlier and talking to Kyle earlier specifically, we were going through some of these documents and they were like flashing back. Oh, yes, I remember. I remember sitting in the room. I remember being in that group and going through this process. And so I want to walk you through that process so you know what was done then and why we have design concepts and standards that we have in our school district. Then we're going to take a look at those standards. So the second objective here is to review the concepts and review those standards. For the purpose of just, I'll say, providing information for you, but also, you know, anyone, the public, you know, because I'm sure this presentation is going to be available to the public. Here are the two larger documents. The document at the top here is a link to the actual document. It's a very large document. So if you open this document, it may look like you can't open it, but you can, you can download it. And then the second document here is a smaller document which will open up and display for you. And it's pulled out of, it's pulled out of the larger document. So it's just a portion. And actually, what I'm going to share with you tonight in great part is what is in that second link. So the process. And once again, just for the purpose of, for you having it as well as for anyone who would have this presentation, these links are provided. But I am going to hand out because we are going to do a modified version of a Read, Pair, Share. So we're going to take a little time at your desk, at your spot. You should have a highlighter. So you're going to need that. My crew out here who was here in 18 and 19, they have these documents as well. And so we're going to take a little bit of time. We're going to read through this. And let me just frame it for you if you don't mind. This was the second phase of the work that was done. Phase one in 1819 was all about boundary changes. All about moving sixth grade into middle schools and what's that's going to do to boundaries. And so phase one was all about that. Phase two was this work. And phase two began with three workshops. Workshop one asked the question to educators, to people in this room and other folks around the district at that time and still here, what activity, what activities best support the success of your students? Okay, so that's workshop one. And we're going to go through that here in a second. Workshop two then took those activities and said, what kind of space do you need to do these activities? Because space matters. You can do certain things in certain spaces, certain things you can't do in certain spaces. And then workshop three was, how do we coordinate these spaces so that they work together? And through this process, then we end, we end up with our design concepts and standards. So workshop one is where we're going to go back in time to right now. I'm going to hand these out and we're going to do a little reading.
I have a question, sorry. Repair, share. What exactly is that?
He's going to explain here in a second, but he's going to have you pair up with a partner. What you have in front of you is the report, the report from workshop one. And so take some time, read it, use your highlighter, highlight the things that are important to you. And then we're going to pair up and you're going to talk with a partner, somebody, kind of your shoulder partner, if you will, at the dais. And then we're going to just talk about what you find. So, but in this workshop, the work was centered around the question,
Dr. Sheldon. After taking a minute to look through this, could you provide additional clarification on the instructions of what you would like us to do?
Sure. So, want you to take the opportunity to go through this document, read it, highlight things that are important, that stand out to you, that are meaningful to you. And then here in just a moment, I'm gonna have you partner up with someone at the dais and just kinda share what you've learned from the reading.
Okay, so we're taking away our findings, including from looking at the outcomes and analyzing that?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes. Alright, I'm gonna give you about thirty more seconds, so wrap it up. Alright, I'm gonna ask you to share something that your partner shared with you. Just maybe one thing? One thing, one thing that your partner shared with you. Who'd like to go first?
I'll go first, Dr. Sheldon.
Okay, I see your hand. Oh, yes. So, I feel like I'm a teacher and you're the students.
So, I was talking with Board Member Miller and she made the observation that some of our, you seeing, looking at the little charts on-
Yeah, what page are you?
Well, not any one particular one, I don't think, but you know, just noticing the difference between how some of these have, you know, extremely high numbers, obviously indicating a very positive experience. And then while some of them are smaller, so I mean, I think that's an important metric, obviously, that we have, you know, use for our evaluation.
Well, you know, it is interesting. So, the one I'm happen, I happen to be looking at is on page sixty-four, Elementary. And at the bottom, zero teachers identified direct instruction as meaningful, meaningful in that portion. And as you can see, at the top, direct instruction definitely isn't near the top of the pack. So, at the elementary level, you know, the sage-on-the-stage form of instruction doesn't work.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
So, the other piece of that, I think, that stood out to me was that if you're comparing, let's say, the elementary in the middle, the ones that do have the highest numbers are the same. So, you look at student collaboration and creative-based learning, those are the same, like, they're both very high, the top two, I would say, or the top two or three for both levels. So, I thought that was interesting.
Who else would like to share something from your partner? Yes?
Well, nothing. We were talking about those different styles.
We were talking about the different styles and that the East Trails Middle School is kind of based on this model. So, that was, you know, with two kids that go there, I had no how, that they were having these type of styles implemented, so that was cool.
These learning activities, and we're gonna get here in just a second, and I know we're, I don't wanna burn through our time and have to rush, but here in just a moment, we're gonna talk about how learning activities are gonna be, eventually gonna be asked, what kind of space do you need? And luckily, these documents passed, can we go a little faster? But, yes, you're right. What you see at East Trails, that space is developed based on these activities and desired activities, learning activities. Dr. Buck?
Something else we talked about is some of the activities, modes or learning modes would have worked well in our factory model, but many of them would not have of our, you know, our classrooms we think about when we were kids. So, the flexibility, the agility they talk about allow for a lot more different learning modalities that we see our kids actually do. Because I have kids go to East Trails as well.
That flexible space, yes, that flexible space. And in our work environments as well. I mean, we see this around, even outside of education. Yes, Camille?
Um, one of the things is as you go from the younger children to the older children, you see that direct instruction does become more prevalent, I think, because the smaller children are learning how to sit still and pay attention and focus. And as you get older, as those children mature, become these high school students, then that center, the teacher being at the center of the classroom becomes more prevalent, sitting down. And I think that goes to the maturity of the child and every, and the neurodivergence that could be going on in a classroom. So, having more flexibility when they're younger contributes to their learning. And we learn how to hone in on those skills as we get older, so we can have more teacher-centered instruction in the classroom at the high school level.
Very good, thank you. What else would you like to share?
We had kind of a similar observation, but really Jennifer had kind of captured it in just different language, noticing that as the elementary students engage in more creative and play-based learning, the older students transition to more project-based and producing outcomes and more individual learning. So, that's kind of similar to their group and what we kind of observed, just, we talked really generally about, about the spaces that we were observing and the activities they do, so.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to ask a question, Dr. Sheldon. What dataset or study or whatever prompted this look at this type of learning environment to begin with? That's my first question. And have we gotten any data that demonstrates the efficacy of this and how much of a difference it actually makes in our test scores and grades and such as that?
So, what led us to this, I think, was the CFMP process. Was that, you know, as we go through this on a regular basis, sitting down and asking the questions, our space is here for a purpose. And what's the purpose of that space? For student learning and for our staff to work and teach in. And how best can we design our space to allow that to happen? That's just a natural question that happens in the design process. What's the purpose of the space? The purpose of the space is to learn and to teach. And so, then how do we design that space best to make that happen? And so, just the natural CFMP process led us to this question and led us to this activity and this outcome. In regards to the efficacy of this process, you know, we've, you know, East Trails and Mason Elementary and, you know, those buildings have been opened, you know, now for, what, two, three, four years. And so, I think we still need a little bit more time to get to that point.
Okay, so we don't really have any demonstrated efficacy that this is going to improve the outcome that our children are gonna get, other than maybe enjoying the environment more?
Well, no, I would say, no, we do have, I'll say, proven efficacy in that our teachers and our students are telling us that this experience is a better experience for them. I was talking with Kyle Gurrell, with Kyle Gurrell earlier, and he was talking about a conversation that he sat in on with Dr. Buck and the three high schools and their students. And the way the Lee Summit High students were talking about their space was different than the way Lee Summit North and Lee Summit West were talking about their space. And there was a sense, from what Mr. Gurrell described to me, a sense of jealousy, if you will, wishing to have that kind of space to learn in and to, and to be honest, with the socialize in as well as high school students do, and that's part of that educational experience.
Okay, so what's the price difference per package for a campus that's ready to learn in this environment versus a tradition, a more traditional approach? I'm assuming there is a premium price to pay for this?
I don't know that there is a premium price difference. And, you know, as we, as we price out space at four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for, you know, major renovation and new construction, the way we designed that space, I mean, square foot is square foot.
Understood. Finishing is worth money, so.
Exactly. And so, and I don't know that the, you know, these finishes are significantly increasing the price of our buildings.
So, are you suggesting that it could be cost-neutral?
I'm suggesting that, I don't believe there would be, and I wanna follow up, and I'll follow up.
Yeah, I would appreciate that if you don't mind. I'm just curious if there's a delta there, because I would think there would be, because internal finishing works and a lot more expensive than framing and that sort of stuff, so. So, yeah, you can just get back to me at that if you don't mind.
We will definitely follow up.
Thank you, Dr. Sheldon.
Yep. Okay. Yes, Board President.
Thank you. So, I have a question. One of the things that I additionally noticed was in regards to play-based learning. In elementary, it was very often or often. In middle school, it was sometimes. And then in high school, it went back up to very often, often, and sometimes. So, I just was curious if anybody explored that, why there was a high and then a dip and then an increase again in that trend as far as that priority for, you know, the difference between elementary, middle, and high school students?
Do you mean project versus play, though? Or are you saying, because there's play and there's project-based learning?
Play-based learning is how it is put on here.
I see it lower. Are you talking about PBL, though, like where it says PBL, like making?
So, right there.
Yeah, but look, it's so much lower.
Yes. In play-based learning, that is, in high school, it is lower than it was in elementary school. But if you compare it to middle school, it was all the way ranked down to just sometimes, which is-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
One time a week or less, and then it has increased when you get up to high school. So, just conceptually, I just, that just stood out to me, because when you think of play, you do think of younger students, and so.
And so, were they thinking maybe, you know, I wasn't in the room at the time? And I'm not sure I could confidently answer that question.
I would ask Dr. Herzog or Board Member Myers if you remember that conversation.
I was in this, I was in the room. I think it has to do with activity-based type situations that we're able to perhaps run with older kids that can have a little bit, perhaps, less direct supervision while they're participating in whatever the task might be. And I would also caution you on that, that I am confident that there are certain subject areas that lend itself much more so to that than others. So, that number might be up a little bit, but I don't think that it would be like, you can make a generalized statement that all across the high school, play-based learning is a regular part of the game. But I do remember doing this little exercise and wondering, what the heck are they wanting this for?
Okay, great conversation. Like to continue on. I think we're gonna move at a pretty rapid pace from here on, okay? So, this next part is now, the workshop two was, we've identified these learning activities. What kind of space do you need to engage in these learning activities? Alright, I'm gonna move you pretty quickly, so we can, I'm gonna give you about thirty more seconds. Alright, if you would give me your attention. What were some meaningful points, and just briefly, briefly, so we can move on, meaningful points that you came across in this portion, workshop number two? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I was quite impressed, actually, with the third grade presentation there. The way they had optimized the learning space to share between classrooms. You know, I thought that was a, you know, a very good approach to that. And I can understand why the middle school is a little more, their model is a little more spread out than the third grade classroom. But, you know, the way they're utilizing that, I'm assuming that's so they can share the resources.
Sure.
So, yeah, no, that looks, that looks like pretty good thoughts to me.
Any other high points that you'd like to-
Board Member Garrett is seeing classrooms like this throughout the district. Now I know why they're coming from. So, I thank you for doing this activity, because I think a lot of people are connected to- So I, I thank you for doing this activity, because I think a lot of people are connecting dots, like, oh, I see where the Genesis and Kyle's worked with a, a bunch of folks back six, seven years ago and how it's come to life.
As I was going through these documents, I was walking down the halls of many of our buildings. They go, oh, I see it, I see it. Yes. Anything else you'd like to pull out before we move on?
So, can I point out one?
Yes, yes, yes.
So I know it's the elementary one, it said about sightlines. So if we think of West, they have some collab spaces without sightlines, thus they don't get used much. Am I correct? In the hallway, those little classrooms, but you can't see it from the classroom. Those little.
You're talking about the little glass?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, those are kind of gotten raided out for other purposes, quite honestly.
So, but you see at Mason, at East Trails, there's sightlines. We, I think we learned in oh-six when we built West that that was a big issue, because you don't want to have students working in small groups but not be supervised. So I think Mason Elementary and East Trails. So I also think we learned from our experiences in other buildings before this work was done as well.
And I think you're going to see that in some, in a couple of documents here in just a little bit. So, all right, moving on to workshop three. Workshop one, what kind of activities? Workshop two, what kind of space do you need for those activities? Workshop three is about taking these different types of spaces for these different types of activities and coordinating their locations so that, to Dr. Buck's point, they're e, they, it makes sense, it's usable. So moving on to workshop three. All right, about fifteen seconds. All right, for the sake of time, I'm not going to let you share out, but I'm going to hand out this next document and we're going to walk through it fairly quickly. All right, so out of this work, out of this work, asking the question, what activities do we need to engage in for our students to be successful? What kind of space do you need and how should that space coordinate with one another? These adjacencies were created. And so I'm going to take you to page one oh-six. It's the very first one. So on the left side, you'll see, on, on, on one oh-five, you'll see the learning activities that we're trying to accomplish, provide space for. And then on one oh-six, you can see in a new build or an addition, how we would, you know, potentially lay that out. If you turn the page, it goes to elementary. Once again, looking at the learning activities, those space categories that we're trying to create, and in a new build or an addition, this is how we could lay it out. Now here's what I want you to envision. Who's been to Mason Elementary? All right, if you've been to Mason, you, and if you've been to the fifth grade, the fifth grade pod, this is the fifth grade pod at Mason Elementary. Four classrooms, activity center in the middle. You walk in, you're in the activity center, and then you've got the four classrooms on the outside.
Page one oh-eight.
That's page one oh-eight, yes. I'm going to flip you to page one-ten. If you walk down the hallway down Mason to the older portion, because the fifth grade pod is a brand-new built, is a brand-new addition onto that building. If you walk down the hallway down toward the third grade classrooms, this is what you'll see. You'll see, because it's, it's the old double-loaded corridor classrooms. And back to Dr. Buck's point, line of sight, you've got that activity center that's been carved out. You've got the four, you've got the two classrooms on each side, but then you've got the two classroom bunched together that were, that used to be the classrooms across the hall. And so you can, it, you can kind of see how this comes together in a new build or a renovation. Going to the middle schools, on page one-twelve, you see the learning spaces. And then you can see how those learning spaces are laid out in new additions and in renovations on page one-thirteen and one-fourteen. One-fifteen, high school learning spaces, and then the high school additions, and then high school renovations. So I started this wanting to follow up with what was referenced on December nineteenth. I talked about guiding documents. I talked, and I talked about, you know, our, our, our process in eighteen and nineteen. And out of that, out of that process came a lot of things, a lot of, a lot of things. But one major accomplishment was the development of our design concepts and our design standards. And so what you have in front of you, what I've shared with you, is the process that the staff in eighteen and nineteen, teachers, educational leaders, community members went through to figure out how, how we teach, the kind of space we need to, to teach and learn in, how we coordinate those spaces, which then ends up with how we design our space in our buildings, whether they're new or whether they're renovations. I've taken us past our time. Any questions?
I have one, sorry. Okay, so this was done in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen?
Yes.
Since, I mean, that is a little while ago and, and things change and people learn and, and observe, you know, what, what's going on with the new buildings and say, oh, I like this, or I would want to change this. Is there a plan to redo this process after a certain length of time? Is it something maybe every ten years or so? Or is there kind of a, a long-range look, or is this just the plan that we're just going to keep going with this moving forward?
So we have a two, we do have a two-year follow-up, like we did a two-year follow-up at Mason. We'll follow up at East Trails after two years, which, is that this? Yeah, okay. So then may, we, so we, we have a two-year follow-up with staff. And I'll give you an example. At Mason, they wanted carpet. They wanted carpet, they wanted carpet, they don't want carpet. And so we've learned that now. And so we're, as we go through this process in the future, we'll share, we will share that information with future design teams.
And the design teams take tours of, not only internally, but they go to other places. So, for example, Greenwood Design Team has been even over in Kansas.
They've been to Blue Valley and Shawnee Mission and take, take a look at facilities in those locations as well.
Thank you.
But to answer your question, yes, I, I would think, you know, in, in the next time we, we tee this up in, in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, would be a good time to revisit this and go through this activity again.
Thank you. Board Member Myers?
Yeah, I would just like to thank you, actually, for taking time to walk us through the step-by-step, because this has just been very, very interesting and eye-opening and, and enlightening to me. And I kind of see how the dots connect together, whereas prior to really looking at these items, I didn't quite understand the entirety of the connectiveness. So I appreciate that. I appreciate your time that you put into bringing this to us tonight.
Thank you. It was a great process then and just wanted to provide some insight. Because, you know, we do walk into our buildings, we see these beautiful buildings, and, and we, and sometimes people say, why? Why, why do we need this kind of building? Well, the, the reason why is what I've outlined tonight and what came out of that process in eighteen and nineteen. I have one last document, we're not going to talk about it. I'm, oh, yes, Dr. Johnson.
I was just wondering, in general, I know teachers went through this process, CFMP process. The curriculum team, sorry, I don't know the official name of the team, but the curriculum team, is there, are there, is there representation here also? Because people develop the curriculum and that gets shared with the teachers on, you know, how we're moving forward.
So on your first document, there was one page that said district level, that doesn't fit in any other groups. That was about sixty people. The curriculum team was part of that. They, they gave their input of what they think classrooms would look like. It's a smaller group, but they didn't fit only in elementary or only in middle school or only in high school.
Just wondering how, if we're talking about the spaces and what spaces we need for the teaching and the activities, where did curriculum fit in that, so?
I think it's also important to note that while we have curriculum specialists, we're content specialist experts. All of our curriculum documents are created by teams of teachers that come together and create those. So I think certainly we would not create a curriculum in which somebody said, I wouldn't have the space to do that. But we also have teachers saying, I have this beautiful space, let's build those activities into our.
All right, thank you. I'm going to provide, I'll give you this one last document and it's for your viewing at your pleasure.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I think this work session is adjourned.